To those blocks and there's easily accommodates development on the parallel street, the streets that run east-west instead of north-south. So.
Where would you close Elizabeth Street?
The Elizabeth Street, the two segments that we identified as potential for closure and those may change, those extents may change based on conditions and an actual engineering analysis of those segments would be from East Ann or from, go, south to north, sorry, from Henry Street to East Ann and then from Ann Street to McKenzie. So they're two separated segments, but you would, you would basically take away Elizabeth as a north-south connector for automotive traffic and you would, you would strengthen its use as north-south for bicycle and pedestrian.
Tom?
Mitch, everything that's on, could you go back to the map?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everything, what, on this east side connector, this, this red South Street and the ancillary streets, they're, they're really in the city center and I think that that road should be shown in the context of the city center map so you can truly get a, a value or an overview of where that road, where these roads wind up in the context of all of the other roads that are in the city center map.
Okay.
Because you may have, you may have parallel, you have, Cooper Street is eventually going to be developed as a bicycle-friendly road and then you have several others in between. I'd like to see, you know, that superimposed on the downtown map, city center map.
We can certainly accommodate that change.
Nancy?
I would have difficulty closing any roads right now. I think for us to start off with and putting in infrastructure is great, but.
I just think over there too with the schools and the commercial, you know, would cause a problem, I know from my husband's company because it's located on the other side, so, you know, there's a bunch of commercial establishments, Elizabeth Alt to Dupont that, you know, those are the ways that they get to the main corridors to accomplish what they're trying to do. So I would not be in favor of closing roads either. What about McKenzie Street?
In the initial proposal that staff made, McKenzie Street was identified for potential application of sharrows. Upon reanalysis, understanding that the primary link there is to the schools, from a purely technical perspective, we probably want to consider some other type of hard infrastructure in order to accommodate children who would be bicycling, so.
Which would be what?
Which would be either a bicycle lane, but probably more appropriately some sort of enhanced sidewalk facility. So, not a full-scale multi-use recreational trail 10 to 12 feet wide, but maybe taking the existing five-foot sidewalk to eight to make it more attractive for, for those younger users.
But not a bike lane?
That would be an exceedingly expensive project because of the railroad crossing and the US-41 interchange, intersection.
Okay, are we almost, are you done with the presentation?
I've got two more. I'm sorry. Burnsthor Isles Loop, this is a neighborhood link Monaco Drive and Madrid Boulevard. The proposal is, is 1.7 miles and again, this is all identified as potentially short-term Bicycle boulevards and, and restriping for bicycle lanes. Madrid Boulevard is probably the easiest because you have no, you have overly wide single lane essentially. Probably the stickiest part of this proposal is the actual signalized intersection at Tripoli and 41 and that segment between Tripoli and US-41, you have enough asphalt for the bicycle lanes, but you would be restricting, you would be eliminating a dedicated right turn.
Not, that traffic in, coming out of Burnsthor Isles is huge and it backs up to way beyond Walgreens, the entry to Walgreens, it backs up to Muscle Car City at times. So if we have two lanes, now we're going to one, we're going to have traffic backed up to Tripoli. So that would, that isn't, I won't approve it, I don't, you know, I hope that my colleagues would not want to change that into, down to one lane. I realize what you want to achieve, but that's the only exit that's signalized out of Burnsthor Isles and it's not just Burnsthor Isles traffic, it's shopping center traffic and it's going to get worse when Publix is redone, so.
And the trucks.
And trucks and, so, I realize what we want to do. I, I do see bicycles in that right lane, so I don't know if you want to have a virtual right lane, a bike lane there, but to put in a, you know, a permanent bike lane and take that down to one lane?
From, from a transportation planning perspective, and this is just a technical perspective, you have traffic throughput, volume, and you have traffic calming. This is a neighborhood area, you have to find the balance between how many cars are we trying to move through that intersection and how much travel demand is the actual neighborhood accommodating that's not generated by it. I know that in terms of this specific neighborhood, there's been a lot of discussion about the need for traffic calming because of the concerns with the volume of traffic that is coming from the shopping center, inappropriately maybe using the neighborhood streets to get to the signalized intersection instead of going south through the shopping center to Burnsthor Road. So increasing the congestion at that intersection by a marginal amount would push traffic away from that intersection because people would say, "I don't want to bother."
I understand your theory.
That's what we see.
I understand your theory, but I'm not buying it. I'm not, I'm not willing to make the rest of the residents in Burnsthor Isles suffer over a strategy. I just, and I know that when I introduce the topic of even sharrows, there's a lot of confusion, so I, I don't mind sharrows. I think it's a great idea because there, we have a lot of cyclists going, using those roads, but it's going to require education. Even, you know, entering on, at the signalized intersection off of 41, it's one lane, there's plenty of space.
Correct.
Except around the, the medians.
Yes.
It gets really tight. I don't know how you would put in a bicycle lane. I've been, as I've been driving it since, you know, trying to pay attention to, well, how would I put in a bicycle lane around those center medians that I certainly would never recommend removing?
Correct. Right.
It's going to be a challenge unless we want to add to the pavement, which will be more expensive.
Yes.
Go ahead, Tom.
Mitch, again, going, going back to the map, half of this is bicycle lanes and the other half is bicycle boulevard.
Correct.
If you look, you can't, you can't really look at the map and distinguish which portion is a lane and which portion is a boulevard to, and do an appropriate analysis. I would, I mean, I guess I can go to a map and, and superimpose it myself, but it would be helpful if it was, you know, clear to us which was a lane and which was a boulevard.
And I appreciate that comment.
I think too, because in our minds, when we're trying to, you know, absorb this as a whole, it's, feels like a piecemeal in a way, you know, because we're trying to make do, so I'm al, I'm almost thinking like I'd rather commit to possibly the long term than the short term only because it gets, it accomplishes what, the goal, you know, without the piecemealing. I don't know, I'm a little, I'm struggling with it a little bit because I totally, I support it, but the lane diet, the actual taking away of the lane is, is not, I don't think it's the right answer for the situation. Maybe what I'm thinking now and maybe what Gary was saying about a cultural experiment, maybe if we started at Jamaica Way and went down into, into PGI, but then again, we're not connecting, so I, I don't know. I don't know how to make the whole system work with, with the constraints that we have right now. Howard?
Based on the discussion we had back in January, I think it was January, council directed us to come back with a much pared-down list, so that's what you got. The best that the group could put together, and it certainly reduces the costs big time as opposed to putting in these separate adding asphalt projects, which is the, the long term. You know, we, he's got one more to go.
Okay.
Well, let's just finish the.
Let's get through the slides.
The final segment I want to talk about is the Punta Gorda Isles connections and these would be Coronado, Akia Stah, Bow Harbor and Magdalena Drive and the red and orange segments that you see on the map here. 2.2 miles of this could be accomplished in short-term projects and an additional 1.2 miles would be long-term projects. The high-dollar items here are really adding bicycle lanes to Akia Stah from Bow Harbor to Magdalena and on Bow Harbor from Albatross to Akia Stah and again, connecting the southern end of, of Punta Gorda Isles, our largest neighborhood, to the rest of the bicycle network.
And the rest of sharrows.
Go back.
Go back, sorry. And the, the short-term projects are all identified as sharrows and those are Coronado, Akia Stah and Magdalena. Magdalena, of course, connecting Akia Stah to Sharif to the multi-use recreational trail, so that's a, that's a really good north-south link that connects to the existing system.
So for right now, for Punta Gorda Isles, we're just looking at bicycle boulevards, some sharrows and a, and a cost of $10,000.
Correct. With those longer-term projects identified and certainly Akia Stah, there's the potential that development impact fees or other sums could, could help go towards that in the longer term.
Well, that's the presentation.
Was that the end?
That's the presentation. The group did what they were asked to do, come back with a much pared-down list, a much cost-effective list and take the, the, basically adding a separate pathway type of bicycle lane into the long term. What I'm hearing is that there are some, you don't want to close any roads and we're very nervous about reducing, eliminating a lane, making Marion like Akia Stah, one lane both ways. And the same with Madrid and I think it was Monaco or just Madrid.
It's, for me, at Burnsthor Isles, it's really just the recommendation, the piece that's from, on Monaco from US-41 to Tripoli.
Correct.
And it's, it's, it's not so much the coming in to the Burnsthor Isles as it is getting out because right now there are two left turn lanes and with the volume of traffic, I mean, I realize that sometimes there isn't that much traffic, but quite often there is and I just think that I'd rather see a virtual bike lane on that so that it's just designating that a bicycle may be there as opposed to eliminating a lane.
And I'm also hearing about Taylor Street as well. I just, I didn't, and I have no idea if what I'm going to say makes any sense at all, but would there be a way to engineer the exiting of traffic more easily by extending the stoplight green to get out and slowing it down a little bit on Tamiami?
Certainly in that proposal, in any proposal where we're touching a signalized intersection, we would be looking at signal timing, that would be part of the, the project cost. It's not just the restriping of the roadway, but looking at the signal timing and the, the signal actualization.
Does that have to, I guess my point is, does that have to be synchronized with the rest of Tamiami or can it be a standalone based on when traffic is there?
There is a traffic synchronization system, believe it or not, for US-41. So it would be incorporated into that plan, but there is, there is room for adjustment given existing traffic volumes.
Nancy?
The signal at, at 41 and Monaco has been extended.
Correct.
What, what do we currently have in the MPO project list coming, you know, that we've, in the next five, you know, is any of this in there, what's in there?
What's in there is, go back. The red lines that you see on this map, county-requested project, Taylor Road Multi-Use Recreational Trail from Airport to 41 South, Complete Streets Project on US-41 from Carmelita to Airport Road, the Carmelita and US-41 intersection improvements and then Complete Streets Project on US-17, East Marion Avenue and East Olympia Avenue from Cooper Street to US-41.
And that includes.
Those projects are currently unfunded priorities within the, the MPO's project priority list.
And that would mean they're way out in time.
They're way out, except for Carmelita. When is Carmelita?
We're getting indications from FDOT that are in their current gaming cycle. Carmelita PDNE, which is Plan Development Environmental Study, has been pushed out to 2019, 20, I believe.
Okay. So the MPO funding is way out.
Yes.
Way out. So do, how do you want to go through this, Howard? Want to go through the, the ending slide?
Well.
The different projects?
I mean, if you want to try and deal with it today, we can, or do you want, do you need more time to get your specific recommendations back to us so we can revise it again?
And I think Tom's suggestion about the detailed mapping with the piecemeal that I'm calling it, so you, we can visually see how the connections would be made.
Okay.
And how important, you know, those connections would be to the overall network.
When, when I started to look at this, I took into consideration the separation between the boulevards and, and the, and the lanes and not being able to easily interpret them. And then what I did is I went to Google Earth and I pulled down a map of the, of the particular areas to try and analyze how, how many lanes were there, how many lanes we might be taking away. I also started to look at parking, if we were going to lose parking, what would that look like from a Google map standpoint so I could just get a better understanding and be comfortable of what we're trying to accomplish here. I really, I fully support a safer system of getting our bikes out there on the roadways and get them out to our parks and get them out to the pathways. I just, I don't feel I have enough information here to be comfortable moving ahead right now with what I see. I need a lot, I need a lot more information. I need to evaluate sidewalks, is there any potential for a sidewalk being made wider to accommodate cycles? I mean, I, when I go down to Punch Park, I, I'm on the sidewalk part of the time and I'm on the road part of the time. I use both options.
And, and we can provide all that, but remember, what was the mantra back in January? Come back with a least costly effective plan we could come up with.
Uh huh.
Remember that. It was not to.
I think that's been done. I think what Tom's point is, is it hasn't been put in a way, we don't live with this 24/7. We've got other parts of our lives and plus we've got other aspects that we're dealing up here. I think that what Tom is asking is, is bring us to, bring it to a way that's easier for us to digest so that we can be comfortable in whether we're going to go forward with this.
Yeah, we can do.
I don't think we're taking issue with the work that's been done.
No, no.
Well, yes, we are, yes, we are. Because there are some areas here that what I'm hearing, and that's okay, I'm hearing that there are some particular roadways you do not want to reduce from two lanes to one.
But at, at the mayor's point, looking at the longer-range situation, maybe we want to think about a longer-range solution in, in different areas and, and make that part of it. I don't know, but it's something we may want to consider.
Okay, so.
We can do that.
Yeah.
We can revise the map, break it up into boulevards and break it up into lanes as-is. We can do that. And then bring it back to you, not, not as another agenda item yet. We need to send it out and you need to provide your thoughts individually to us, to me, so we can then take a look at where, where we may want to revise this again.
Kim?
I just want to say, I don't, I guess I don't remember saying, "Come up with the most cost-effective way."
Oh, yes, we did.
Okay, so we probably said that.
Well, we just couldn't, we couldn't digest the five plus million.
That's right.
Well, I mean, in my mind, I thought, and this is great, I mean, I, you know, this is, this is what we asked for, but I could see combining the short and long-term projects and, you know, yes, the cost is an issue, but at some point we're going to do it. I don't want to do something that's not, that at some point's going to be, you know, null and void. Let's just take what we have and move forward in the most, you know, for the most safe, safety for our community and whatever, if you're combining the two or, and we, we're getting the biggest bang for our buck as we go along.
And to that point, you know, some of it, like the Nesbit Street makes perfect sense, the Coronado, that connection, I really like that. Certain parts of it make a lot of sense, maybe not going all the way into the park and taking away the parking, maybe, you know, it ends right there at Marion and then that connection we would have to, you know, take into consideration, just like we've done with the, the pathways. I mean, we didn't always have all the connections, we still don't, but we still move forward with different parts of the project to get the overall concept, you know, going. So parts of it, I think I could really, really support, but the, the other parts, I think, to Tom's point, we need more detail so we really understand the impacts of what it's going to do to the system. Nancy?
I agree. I was hoping that there would be some, you're coming to us and making the recommendation. I'm all for getting going on something because I think we need to begin to, to make it as safe as possible, but pointing, you know, coming it to us and making a recommendation and then not pointing out the fact that we already have commitment for the horse-tron carriage parking and so you need to show us that we had to point that out, so then, you know, rather than, I think the recommendation needs to include how to address any of the potential issues that may come up. So the parking on Nesbit is particularly important because we've had discussions about how crowded the parking lot is at Lashley and other Lashley Park-related parking issues. I'm not opposed to removing the parking and having bicycle lanes there, it's just what do we do with the, the cars? It's just, we just need to discuss it and flush that out, that's all. So I think that may be some of the other issues, but there may be parts of this we could get going on.
And if I could provide an example of that, if we go back to the PGI short-term versus the long-term, the, the short-term that you've advertised over here, it's not going to change. In my mind, we could go ahead with that right now. I have, I have no issue because the long-term projects that you have, that we have here are not going to impact it one way or the other and we are going to need the, the short-term.
The Coronado, yes.
In conjunction, so I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Mitch?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can do the Punta Gorda Isles short-term.
Go back to the slide with the, with the, yes.
That's $10,000.
So everybody's okay with the Coronado, Akia Stah, Magdalena Drive?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do sharrows.
And like Tom's saying, that the long-term there makes a lot of sense.
Well, but.
We can't pay for it right now, but we would love to have it.
Right, maybe yes.
Find a way to get there somehow.
Well, again, it's.
Because the other, the other doesn't work. What we're doing up there on the short-term does not work down on below, on either one of those roads because of the, the situation. So really, the long-term on those roads is the only option for us to make it safer and accommodate everyone on the road.
That's why it's long-term.
Right. So that, I think that's what Tom's saying too, is that we, we really need to drill down and decide how to manage it short and long-term.
Yep.
And get more detail. Okay? And include if there's park, a lane being taken away, parking being taken away, or, or like you said, a sidewalk option, not that that's really popular with the, with the cyclists, but in some cases it may be the only option.
McKenzie it would work.
Again, that adds.
McKenzie it would work.
That will add dollars to the project.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, is there any more like this page that we could say, "Okay, forget about it, you don't need to do that with?"
Yeah, what about, go back to Nesbit.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear any.
Cut down on his work.
Because there were bits and pieces of each that you had, yeah, no, yeah, no.
I mean, as far as like Burnsthor Isles, I have to rely on Nancy.
Again, we're going to come back with a revise there. We're going to have, come, to come back with a revision there too. I didn't hear any consensus to move forward with Burnsthor Isles.
Is, sorry, just a question. Is Cooper Street included in, as a cost element in the city center anyplace?
No, sir. Cooper Street is identified in our current capital improvement program.
But it's not in here?
No, no, not in this proposal.
Why not?
Because you asked us not to.
Because you already committed to do it.
It's a sales tax project.
It's a sales tax.
I thought we, I thought we, we spoke about including the sales tax projects.
No, we did not. We said keep that separate because that added to the 5.5 million. That overinflated.
Okay.
Remember that?
Okay.
Remember that conversation? We can put it back in, but we specifically held that out because, remember, we talked about the 5.5 million and how of that, 1.4 million or something like that was sales tax.
But, but it's, it's a roadway that is going to be built in conjunction with some of the other longer-range plans that we have in front of us.
Yes, it is.
So we should include it on the maps, but don't include the cost because we've already.
It is on the map.
It is on the map.
It is on the map.
Well, when we do the detailed map of what this, the, what it's going, the system is going to look like, it's a MRT, right? It's going to be.
It's a MRT.
It's a MRT. So it should show on there as a MRT. I think that's what Tom's saying.
And in conjunction, and we, we, I would like to see it incorporated in one map, city center versus seaside and, and city center separately because they, they are in that district.
I've got that down. Combine east side and city center. I've got it down.
And then what, let's revisit Nesbit again? I mean, I was okay with that up until we get to Marion.
So between Virginia and Marion Avenue is the segment that you would be.
Well, when you get past Olympia, you have parking on both sides of that street.
Yeah, you do.
And then you have the Celtic Ray with trucks there and so really, sometimes there's one lane because there's parking on both sides of the street and there's, you know, turn lane for the post office and there's a turn lane. So it's very crowded between Olympia and Marion.
Yeah, that's true.
So.
Is there, is there really on-street parking there?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, there is. On both sides. On both sides of the street.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Used it many times.
So it would only be Olympia to, it'd only be one block?
It's a really worth one block?
Unless you took the parking off there.
No, it's not worth.
At that point.
I mean, the parking on that, if it, if they're parking up there right by that intersection, I don't know. I mean, let's put it in there for the plan and then we can talk about it then.
That's why I was saying, if we're ta, removing parking, we need to make that a part of the analysis of how, what are we doing with that parking?
I don't, I don't think we want to create any more parking issues like we have over by Manatee Pizza.
Well, that's in the long-term plan too.
I know it's in the long-term, but I mean, that's something that's, you know, it's, and if we're just going to start taking parking out in some of these other areas, we're going to create another type of potential situation like that where there just isn't the parking to support the commerce.
I like Tom's suggestion too of actual aerials so we can get a better idea of.
They were helpful.
Yeah.
It's just a lot of work.
It is. Lot more work.
Tremendous amount more work.
It really is.
It is important.
Because this, you know, we're going to have even more bikes than we ever imagined.
We will do our best to revise it. It's going to take some time.
Okay.
Be patient with us because this is going to take some time with all the other stuff we're doing. What I, what we can do though is do the Punta Gorda Isles sharrow connection. At least we can get something in the ground.
It would be nice to have something in the ground so we can show some people examples of.
Yep.
We'll get that part done.
Because I think that's hard for people to visualize.
But be patient with us for the rest.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Are there some streets in the city centerpiece though that we could do?
Well, you're, you're kind of piecemealing it. Can we come?
Virginia?
Okay, okay.
I really don't want a piece, I don't want a piecemeal. We, we have a, we're trying to create a.
I mean, Virginia's already a share of the road marked, correct?
Yes.
So could we do a Bicycle Boulevard on Virginia?
Certainly.
I mean, that's a crosstown corridor?
I think the more we start to introduce some of these, then the people start to see it, they start to understand it. It may help in the acceptance.
That's, that's typically the pattern you see in other communities and.
Well, I'm hearing, you have no issues with, with any of the sharo recommendations? Because we can do those.
Can we see, are they all in one list so we can go through it?
No, they're not all in one list.
I, I think Virginia makes sense. Is everybody okay with Virginia?
Yes.
I have no objection to Virginia.
We're not taking away part, there's no on-street parking there. It's already marked share of the road. It goes the distance. Goes from the Shreve Street to the Smokehouse Restaurant. You can get there from there. Then Virginia too. Then that'll be our two little pilot projects.
Virginia and the PGI sharos.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We will, we'll do that and we'll give us some time to revise this again.
Okay.
Well, there would, oh, that's Virginia and Nesbit.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have continued discussion of rehabilitation of four commercial units to four residential units in the Andrews Building.
We spent some time, considerable amount of time since the last meeting. Council made the direction that we convert four commercial units into residential. And it took us some time to figure out a way to accomplish that. We've also provided some other options for you, but let me just go through this process. Because it, it took some time for us to come to you that we're comfortable with a recommendation that if a variance for the base flood elevation was given to you by the Bernice Russell CDC, because they have to apply for them. That as a staff, we would feel comfortable with evaluating that vari, that variance. Obviously, it's got to go through public hearings, we know that. Based on what we have found in our floodplain regulations. We would do this as a local project, do not use any federal funds. We talked about a few weeks ago of setting some kind of a, a funding limit that the city might impose on the project. And we talked about $200,000, $50,000 per unit, even though we haven't designed it or bid it. And the Bernice Russell CDC has not, oh, oh, were directed to assist in going out, finding some private donors or nonprofit donors to help keep those costs down when we finally do the project. So our recommendation would be that if you feel comfortable with the variance process, even though you can't approve a variance today, but feel comfortable with the variance process, given the, the stipulations that we feel could merit such a variance. We would do it as a local project. A variance based on the base flood, the lowest floor elevation. Set a limitation of $200,000 as, as the project. The other alternatives would be that, and, and we can still do this whether or not we do this conversion anyways. We still have a few lots out that the city owns in the Tribune Woods area. Some of them we could put out and donate to local organizations that, that build and construct affordable housing. We can still do that. Or if you're not comfortable with the variance and you want to keep it as a commercial venture, we would assist them in getting some commercial real estate brokers who, who have a lot of expertise in renting out commercial space. So again, as a staff, we feel that there are regulations in place within our current codes that could support a variance from a staff standpoint for the conversion. Now, in addition, we were provided a, another list of other items from the Bernice Russell CDC. Some of those items go beyond what the project is. They go beyond looking at the second floor and looking at the building as a whole and some other items. That's beyond what, what we were talking about a few weeks ago. So I think we need to, that's certainly not in this dollar limitation that we put together. I think we need to, we need to focus on converting, if that's what we want to do, focus on converting four commercial units into residential because that is a high priority in the neighborhood.
That's what we've heard that they want. We've heard that the commercial did not work and they've had years to explore all those options. So for me, the, you know, trying to revive the commercial is, is not a viable alternative. And I like the funding limit, especially because this is a, this has not been budgeted up until the request came in. So, you know, we really need to set the limits on how much, I think 200,000, 50,000 a unit is reasonable. I'm okay with the variance, as long as we've worked out the details about, you know, the, the, our FEMA certificates and things like that, and it's not going to hurt the city in any way. I think it's fine.
I agree.
What about, what about the list now?
200,000 is the funding limit. That's how I look at it. Yeah. However they spend it is, they're the management.
Well, we don't necessarily have to spend the $200,000 if we get sufficient community participation and cooperation in this. And that was my intent when we, when we started down this path as well. We have an obligation to, to, to finish it. And I also think that we should make sure that we, we don't leave ourselves in a position where all four units, for some reason, remain incomplete. We, we at least have to work and get one complete, then the other one complete, and then a third one complete. So at least if we, if there's some reason that comes up that we can't do all of them, we have some housing to, to make available.
You mean because of the funding or for whatever reason?
For whatever, for whatever reason, I, I don't know.
That's interesting.
Yeah. I think on the list, I, I think we need to stay, stick with the objective. And the objective is to provide four affordable housing units within the building. I, I do have some concern in that, and I appreciate the sincerity of the organization in working with the residents that if they have to floodgate the building, that they will see to it that those. It's kind of one of those things, making commitments for other people down the road, and will they do this? And, and these are people's homes, and, you know, we're having to floodgate their homes and, and, you know, move them out. So how will that be orchestrated down the road? But as far as the actual project itself, I think we really need to stay focused. I agree with, it's an interesting idea about, you know, only doing one at a time or whatever. But then again, is there some, if we do all four at once, is there some?
Economies of scale?
Yeah, economies of scale.
Yes.
And, and that we're doing this and we're gaining more community support. So we may be, may be able to gain more community support in getting the whole project completed.
We're managing, we're managing the funds.
Well, it's, it's local funds. We would select the architect, approve the architectural, along with, I mean, obviously, we would be in partnership with, with the Bernstour, Bernice Russell CDC, because they're the ones who are going to be managing it after we turn it over to them.
Right.
But we would manage the construction. We, it's our project.
Okay. I'm o, I'm okay with that.
It seems to me that before we can even go to bid and find out what this project's going to cost, we're going to have to, somebody's going to have to expend, and I assume it would be us, some funds for architectural so that you have something, that you can give them and find out. And as I recall, the, the discussion was is that basically as a council, we agreed to underwrite up to $200,000 of this project. Whether we do one at a time or four at a time, I think we, is premature to say until we find out what the cost of the project is and what other fundings could be obtained by, by other organizations. Because if there is good concrete funding available through other organizations, and we have to spend $100,000 of what we, we've committed, that's even better because that basically puts us in a position when the next type of project of some sort like this, we're going to have a good fuzzy warm feeling and we're going to be able to have those types of funds to continue on this type of process in a longer term, rather than a make it or break it one-term project. And if it takes the $200,000 and we get four good affordable units, we're, we're all happy. So I think it's, it's the, the onus is on us initially to commit, to find out what the project's going to cost through architectural funding. And then it's, the onus is then going to be on, on our partners here to come up with the additional fundings, whatever that bidding's going to be, knowing what we have. And hopefully, they're going to, the idea would be is all they need is the architectural funding. They, they find some really good donors, and then we can go farther down the road with, with further projects. So I think what I'd like to see us do is say, agree that we've got the cap, which we've agreed to, that this is, that we can do the, the variance if it's brought forth to us to go, go to the project. And also to support the idea of getting an architect, that, that work done now so that we know what the project really is.
So then to that point, once we get the architectural services and the hard costs, or then we, we are going to define the scope of work? Because what I was saying is that if we're going to grant them the monies, you know, it, it depends on what they get as far as donations too. I wouldn't want us to see us micromanage too much, you know, what the funds could be spent on, seeing as that we don't really know at this point.
Our objective is to hire an architect to design four units, come up with architectural projections. But that's what they do, they'll provide, and then we bid it out. And then once we bid it out, we'll know what the components are, on what the project costs are going to be. And in addition, maybe some of those components could be provided by either private sector, the nonprofit sector. We go through it in a very structured manner. At the same time, we're doing the architectural drawings, Bernice Russell CDC would be submitting for a variance.
Okay.
Same time. Keep the process moving.
Kim?
Okay, I just want to make sure that when we talked about it last time, the money for the architect was going to be used by CBG funds.
Not now.
I know it can't be now, but what I'm saying is that money was going to be used for that. So now we're going to include it in the $200,000.
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
Do you think we're actually going to be able to build out four units, architecture, and build for $50,000 apiece?
That's what we're going to try and do.
I know, but realistically?
Well, I, I.
I guess until we even bid out the architectural services, we don't really know much because we don't even know how much that's going to cost, do we?
Well.
Well, we have some bids.
We, we have some ideas. We don't have any bids yet, but we have ideas. I mean, you're, you're talking four units.
I mean, Bernice Russell.
Had, had an idea, had a planning number, okay?
They, they had a planning number, but I, I, I just want to say, this came about because we wanted to put in some sidewalks, and they said, no, they'd rather see us spend the money on the architectural. If we spend the money on the architectural and they come to us the variance, but it takes $400,000 to do the project, we're committed to 200. If it takes them two more years to be able to generate that other $400,000 to finish or whatever that project is, well, that's, that's just the case. But we can't even get started to that until I think we get a hardcore plan that would, and I think it would behoove us to commit to the architectural services right now and then take that from that cap, but, you know, for the project itself, but just assume like. You know, the project may happen in six months, it may happen in five years, who knows? I don't know. But I think we need to go forward because I think it's an appropriate direction to take for the city.
Well, our objective is, is to get it done.
I'm, I'm talking metaphorically, you know, I, I do always go to the extremes, 103 miles an hour and 5 miles.
But when we start the variance process and the architectural at the same time, that keeps it going.
Yes, okay.
We need a motion?
I'd just like to say that I, I really, I'm on the Housing Authority, I'm over there. And we all know it's one of the priorities over there. So I just, you know, when we're talking about spending $350,000 on sidewalks and stuff like that for recreational use, what we're talking about here and have no mistake is people who are homeless, who have nowhere to live. So, I mean, they have to be our priority, really.
So do we need a motion, Howard, yes?
I would, I would, I think we need a motion to say it's going to be a local project, soup to nuts.
Soup to nuts again.
The objective is to convert four commercial units into four residential and that we start the process to secure the services of architectural services and that to direct the Bernice Russell CDC to prepare a variance request.
And that our funding limit is 200,000.
200,000. I so move.
Carrie so moves.
Second.
Kim seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And of course, this is going to show up in the budget discussions.
It will.
Yes.
And, and you'll, you'll hear the variance in a public hearing request.
Okay. Do they, can we waive the fee? Do they have, are we going to charge them?
Oh, since it's a project that we kind of have, have blessed and are moving forward on, it's a local project, I'm not sure we, I would like to.
Can we waive the fee for the variance?
We can, we've done it before. But they're submitting the variance.
Yes.
Okay, well.
Do we need a motion to?
We do.
I'll make a motion to waive the variance fee.
We have a motion second to waive the variance fee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
We did check with Charlotte County. Bob Ebert is here from Charlotte County because they have a contract with the Bernice Russell CDC. They will amend their contract to accommodate this project. They're all four for tomorrow. Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are going to take a short break. 11:46. We are back in session. And next, we have discussed provisions and intent of ordinances allowing sidewalks in the side yards.
For the record, Teri Tubbs, this is actually a, a part of a sentence that we left out of the actual ordinance as it was adopted. And staff would like to move forward with the correction to clarify where the permitted sidewalk was intended to, to run. The way it's currently drafted, it could run all the way down.
So we had any instances where this has become a problem or not?
Not yet. We were discussing the, I was going over the new ordinance with staff members and that's when I realized it after it was adopted. And I apologize, that was a total miss by me.
So do we have, anybody have any issues?
Move approval.
We're not.
We're okay.
For the change.
We need to, we need to amend it now.
Yes, yes, I do have to go through the process.
Oh, it does?
So we have consensus to move forward with the amendment?
Move forward with three more meetings.
We have consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're moving into new business. And first is request to name new library and archive building adjacent to History Park as the Punta Gorda Library. You want me to take it? Okay. So we're officially going to send a letter of request to the Board of County Commissioners to ask them for their consideration to name, rename the project to the Punta Gorda Library. What, does anybody have any feeling if they want to put an archive? I mean, I, I'm okay with that because they, they've kept that, but I don't know. I don't know what their thoughts are.
At some point in time, they may want to relocate their archive.
True, actually, the project includes an archive.
It does.
I would like to keep the name archive off of it, only because the, the Punta Gorda History Center will have an archive. And so it's, I think the Punta Gorda History Center is not going to say, and archive. And if we add archive to that, and then there's archive here, then it gets to be confusing.
I'm okay.
I think it just keeps it.
Keep it simple.
Keeps it simple.
Simple.
Okay. The Punta Gorda Library, then we will send a request to the Board of County Commissioners. We'll send a letter, okay?
Great.
Then we'll follow through when they hear that at their commission meeting, and somebody will go and be present.
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion as second to send the letter to request the name, the Punta Gorda Library. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we have. Okay, next we have the Watershed's Reasonable Assurance Plan, Fifth Biannual Performance Monitoring Summary and Next Steps.
Good morning. Tom Jackson, Utilities Department. For the record, I want to make this very, very brief. Over 10 years ago, the Southwest Florida Water Management District, the City of Punta Gorda and about 10 other stakeholders entered into an agreement to do management plan activities to reduce or eliminate the man-made contributions of TDS and chlorides into Shell and Prairie Creeks. We were required by DEP to do a biannual, I should say we. The Water Management District was required by DEP to do a biannual report. This is our fifth biannual report, making the program 10 years, 10 years old of actual sampling and reporting. The first part of this presentation is that report. The data has looked the same for the last two or three years. We feel and the Water Management District feels that the management action plans, including the Farms Program, which as you will recall, is back plugging shallow ag wells to get to fresher, less saline, less TDS-containing water as well as doing onsite stormwater ponds to irrigate the groves from. That that has all, and in fact, has all been very, very successful. But there's no more that can be done to reduce the natural occurrence of TDS and chlorides in Shell and Prairie Creek. Utility staff concurs with that conclusion. And what the Water Management District wants to do is submit a letter to DEP saying they're going to discontinue doing the biannual reports. They're not going to stop doing the management plans, they're not going to stop doing farms and they're not going to stop doing the sampling. They just want to get out from under the every-two-year massive reporting phase that has been going on now. Staff's recommendation is that we support that.
So it doesn't change the work?
No, it does not.
Okay.
What it does is it changes the reporting. And DEP may not let them do that. It's totally up to DEP. But they wanted us to be aware of what they were thinking and they wanted concurrence or sign on that the council and the city has no objection to that.
Kim?
I just have a question. Did it, did this program, the Farms Program, did it reach what the expectations were?
Yes, yes. It did by about year four.
Okay. So we never really thought it would cure our problem.
None of their scientists, none of, looking at our historical data, and we had pretty good historical data going to pre-development water sampling of Shell and Prairie Creek before the groves went in, before their contributions. So we knew what the background level or the natural level was and we feel we've reached that. So no one, no one thought we could eliminate it completely with this program.
So we've always had the problem even before allowing the deep injection wells?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And I don't know if we need, we certainly don't, I don't know what we need for this other than just consensus I can take back to the Water Management District to go forward with their letter to DEP.
Yeah. So are we okay with them requesting to discontinue the monitoring, the reporting?
Reporting, not.
The reporting on the monitoring?
Right, yes.
That they're still going to do?
Yes, yes.
We have consensus.
They're required to by DEP because, and I wanted to get the chance to tell you what a WIBID is. WIBID is, a WBID is a water body identification. And water bodies aren't called by their names, they're called by WIBID numbers. So it's a government thing.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're very welcome. I knew everyone was concerned.
Government jargon acronyms. Put that in there. WIBID, 1962.
They'll still be required by state and federal rule to sample and report the values in those WIBIDS.
I actually thought that was a year. I thought, God, 1962.
No, it's a water body identification number.
All right.
All right, you got your consensus.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have discussion regarding temporary pre-development sign located at 307 East Myria.
Do I have to recuse myself from that?
Okay.
Because I own the property. I didn't put the sign out, but I own the property. I just want to clarify that.
For the record, Teri Tubbs, Urban Design. This sign appeared on a property that we had talked to a potential developer about actually constructing the proposed development. The city code does allow temporary pre-development signs of this nature, no more than five feet in height, 32 square feet in area, after they have received conceptual DRC approval. The issue with this sign is that they have not yet applied for DRC, so therefore they do not have that conceptual approval. There are also time limitations on how long temporary pre-development signs can be in place. The building permit is required to be obtained within nine months after the sign has been put in place. And construction must begin within six months of the issuance of the building permit. This sign is actually six feet, six inches in height, so it is a little higher than the five-foot limitation that would allow a temporary pre-development sign. Technically, they're supposed to have a no-charge zoning permit prior to installing the sign. It's kind of a record-keeping thing, so we have a record of it. It's not for the fee. So staff is looking for direction. We had contacted one of the principals of the development and advised them that the sign was not yet permitted.
So what do they need to go to DRC? What?
They need to submit their development review plans for technical review for staff to, because that gets into the location of the building on the property, setbacks, design of the building, ensuring utilities, and those sort of things, that all of those issues are addressed so that they can move forward to building permit. And at this point in time, that has not yet been submitted.
Okay. Carrie?
Have they committed to do that in any kind of specified timeframe?
Not to me. I have not heard it.
When we did the pedal and play Friday night, right, this was our last stop. And the, one of the principals of this development stated they would like to get this project initiated by the end of the calendar year. I don't know if that's aggressive or not. They said by the end of the calendar year, they would like to get something started. Now, I don't know if that is actual submittal of actual documents to DRC, but that's what they told the audience at that time. So if you want to allow them to have a sign, then I would suggest you put in some timelines. Say, it goes down if it's, if you don't do what you need to do by a certain date.
Because we're already, it's already bigger than it should be. The only other problem that I have is, and we talked about this on another parcel, is that the exposed raw wood, I would like to see it at least painted so it looks a little bit more professional and not just nailed up on some wood planks. But I guess six months for me would be okay.
I'm fine till the end of the year. I know what they're trying to do is to get interest in the project before they really proceed. And so I don't have a problem. We've done this before in the community and I think.
And now, I mean, now is the time when we really need to be encouraging this type of development. So I'd say to the end of the calendar year.
End of the calendar year and then come back to council if, for some reason, there needs to be further discussion.
I'm fine with painting the legs and the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
I don't have any major objection. I would like to see them make their application upfront. But this is a project, the type of project that we want to see come in this community and I don't want to be one that would hinder that in any way. But I think we should have a timeline on it. I think the end of the year is generous, but I can go along with it.
And I think back in the day when a lot of development was going along, you know, we really had to push that hard because of the proliferation of signs. But that's, you know, the economic conditions are quite different right now. So we have consensus to paint the legs and leave it up for the, to the end of the calendar year. And then if they haven't met DRC by then, then there has to be an additional request or just wait.